Good evening and welcome to tonight's Committee of the Whole meeting. I'm Jim Rodecky and along with Ron Singer, I'm the fourth ward, we're the fourth ward aldermen here in Geneva and tonight I will have the pleasure of serving as the Committee of the Whole chairman. Let the record reflect that all aldermen are present with the exception of Alderman Cummings. And Alderman Bruno, let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance if you would be so kind.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business tonight is to approve the Special Committee of the Whole minutes from November 6, 2015, and the Regular Committee of the Whole minutes from November 9, 2015. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Marx, second by Bruno. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Moving right along down to item three, items of business. Item 3A, recommend draft ordinance amending Title IV, Chapter 2 liquor control, Section 4-2-13, adding one Class B3 liquor license, Giamia LL at 13 North 3rd Street. Do I have a motion and a second?
Second.
Motion by Sino, second by Marx. Do we have any comments from the dais? Do we have the applicant with us this evening? Would you care to join us at the mic and tell us a little bit about yourself and a little bit about your business?
Sure. Not much of a public speaker, so my name is Brian.
It doesn't stop anybody else around here.
We've been fortunate in the last couple of years. We own a restaurant in Glen Island called Fire &amp; Wine. We've had it for four years. We've recently and six months ago opened Giamia Pizza Bar in Wheaton. It's done very well. And we're residents of Geneva for nine years, so we wanted to bring the project here. Once we found the location and got the logistics worked out with the landlord, it seems to be a pretty good deal. We've ripped up the street several times, thanks to everybody around, and we're excited. We're happy to be our kids go to school here. We live here and it's just a fun project, bringing it home.
Excellent. Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is free publicity here and I am interested. It is a first ward business. You might want to tell the viewing audience the location and what's your, the general theme or concept is.
Sure. Location is 13 North 3rd Street, right behind Starbucks, the old Great Harvest Bread building.
Okay.
You know, our concept is really fun. It's different than anything else. We do offer brick oven pizzas, but that's not the entire concept. It's small plate driven, vegetables, salads, healthy, really healthy driven things that are kind of chef oriented, great pastas of course, and kind of eclectic wine and beer menu.
Thank you. I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Alderman Singer?
Yeah, I was looking for a clarification as to that was where the Brett Harvest location was at. Harvest Bread or Brett Harvest location?
Yes.
Is this going to be a deli?
No, this is a full service restaurant.
Full service restaurant?
Yes.
Good luck.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And you're looking to open?
We hope the first of February.
First of February?
Yeah.
Alderman Kilburg?
I believe they had a drive-through window. Are you going to utilize that at all?
We are not. We're going to take that out.
Any other questions or comments? Well, hey, it's good luck. Great to have you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. We have a motion and second on the floor. Well, let's take a roll call vote on that.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burkhart?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Jim Rodecky?
Aye.
Tom Simonian?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item B, recommend draft resolution authorizing purchase of Altech TA 50 bucket truck from Altech Industries in the amount of $199,557. So we have a motion and second?
So moved.
Motion Marx?
Second.
Second Bruno? Any discussion from the dais? Any questions? Alderman Simonian?
Thank you. Have we looked into leasing stuff like this, or leasing a product like this? There's leasing available? Did we compare leasing to purchasing by any chance?
We didn't actively look into leasing for this vehicle. It's a vehicle that actually it's currently in use right now. It's a workhorse vehicle for the utility. I drove by it on my way here tonight. It's running at 7th and State. So leasing a vehicle is typically something that's done more for the contractors, that activity can be scheduled in advance and they keep it for a long period of time. Getting something like this would require getting it out of Indiana or Wisconsin where the leasing agencies, houses are at, and getting it, getting it in a quick manner is difficult to do.
I'm sorry, Hal. I meant instead of purchasing, actually leasing, not on an as needed basis, but a leasing arrangement versus a purchasing arrangement?
No, we didn't look at that.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Motion and a second. We'll take a roll call.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burkhart?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Jim Rodecky?
Aye.
Tom Simonian?
Nay.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Motion carries eight to one. Moving on to item C, recommend approval of certificate of completion for park place at Route 31 and Stevens Streets. Do we have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Marx, second by Singer. Any questions or comments from the dais? Any questions or comments from the audience? Hearing none, seeing none. Please call the roll.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burkhart?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Jim Rodecky?
Aye.
Tom Simonian?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item 3D, recommend draft ordinance repealing Title IX, Section 9-3A-4B related to sanitary sewer credits. Have a motion and second, please.
So moved.
Motion Marx, second. Sino?
Mr. Chair, given my long relationship with a potential petitioner on this matter and my wife's current employment with a potential resident that might want to leverage this, I'd like to recuse myself.
Very well. Under the rules, Robert's rules, when somebody recuses themselves, they have to leave the room. And when we're finished with this business, or two and a half hours later, we'll come get you, Mike. Whoever comes first. And wait for the cone of silence to come down? Do we have a motion and second? Do we have any comments or questions from the dais? Alderman Simonian?
Thank you, Chairman. In the executive summary, it states that in 2010, the city staff recommended, the city council approved action to suspend the code or credit until revenues meet projections. Am I to assume that revenues have not met projections?
I ask Mr. Van Gescam to please come to the mic and/or Mr. Babica.
I would say in some instances that revenues have met projections, but it goes year by year. I would say as a manager of the fund and also in consultation with city administrator and public works director, the reason why we're raising rates is to make sure that our fund is stable. And as we continue to raise rates and see more and more impact from IEPa regulations, we just felt that in order to be consistent with our general rules for not giving out sewer credits and any confusion that this may have for industrial customers, that this be taken off the books.
I could have a follow-up there real quick. In addition, this was re-discussed by the city council at the policy meeting held by the city council in December of 2012, at which time the city council at that policy meeting rededicated staff to suspend the sanitary sewer credits throughout the entire city. So this has been discussed twice by the city council, once in 2010 and again in 2012. And it was further reinforced by the rate study committee that was established by the city council, at which at that point in time, the city council directed staff to suspend all sanitary sewer credits throughout the entire organization.
Unfortunately, I wasn't here any of those dates, so I'm trying to catch up, I guess. The other question I have is, it said prior to 2010, there were only two companies that were eligible, but then it says if the credit is reestablished, that you estimate that the annual loss in revenues is $130,000. Am I to assume that those two companies absorbed that 130,000, or how many companies are currently taking advantage of this?
No, I was including other industries that may take advantage, roughly five or six other industries that may take advantage of that.
They're not taking advantage of it now?
No.
No? But they would be eligible?
Yes.
And I guess, how would this position us with regards to our neighbors if a business were to come in? Would we be at a disadvantage by not offering it if they're offering it?
All that I can say is I did look on the code for both St. Charles and Batavia. It is in their code that they do allow credits. I reached out to my contacts there last week to see if they still do offer those credits or if they've done what we have done and suspend them. I have not gotten an answer on that. Or if they do have any industries currently that they are giving credits to.
So right now, if I read this correctly, if an industrial customer establishes to the satisfaction of the city council that a portion of the water used is not discharged, then the city council can make that determination?
That's not-
Is that how it's structured right now? Am I correct in the way the verbiage is?
That's the way the verbiage in the code is, but the policy that the council had given staff was that those are suspended. So at this point, it wouldn't even come to the council because council-
Why, no, I'm talking about now, currently. Currently, it comes to the council. So we always have, so we can say no to everything, but we always have that, I guess, option in the event major industrial partner decides to come into the new industrial park or something like that. And this is an opportunity for us to negotiate to secure that opportunity versus a, I mean, I would like to have that opportunity to always negotiate that if need be versus just a blanket no to everybody, not knowing what the future holds. At the end of the day, we still have control over it and we can decide whether this is something that's worth the city's while as a, if we're going to give up $20,000 or $30,000 in potential water credits or sanitary credits in lieu of $100,000 in tax revenue, I think it's a good trade. But I think it's, I would rather have the tool to be able to use it versus never have it and have a blanket no to everybody coming in if they ask the question. So that's my opinion. Thank you, Chairman.
Any other comments? Alderman Kilburg?
I believe that Johnson Controls actually attended one of those meetings and was involved in the discussion as it relates to credits.
Flavors of North America, Terry Emel was here in 2012.
I believe Johnson-
They could have been also. I remember Terry being here.
And again, in the production of batteries, they use a lot of water and then there's disappearance and it doesn't really enter our sewer system. Have we had any communication at all with any of these companies that are currently getting a credit that notifying them that they, it may be suspended?
As of, when the credits were suspended by the city council in 2010, the two that were receiving it for between six months and a year, those were taken off. So they, nobody's been receiving a credit since 2010.
So has anyone been notified at any of these companies that were involved or interested in this topic? Have they been notified at all?
No.
Okay. That it was under consideration again?
Pardon me?
That this was being considered again, or it was before the council?
No, we did not.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Burkhart?
If I could, I've been part of some email communication with Burgess Norton because they're in my ward and they have, it was my understanding they've been asking for the credit again, and that was part of the prompting of why we're here tonight to clarify in our ordinance to remove it. I felt like that was what we've been talking about, right?
That's correct. Staff received a request from Burgess Norton earlier in the summer, or actually late, late in the spring, early in the summer, requesting the credit at which point in time they were notified by the staff and the city administrator that the corporate policy of the city of Geneva was to suspend all rebates. And that's what initiated this-
So I think part of this, why we're here tonight is we felt like, even though it's been policy and it's been discussed, obviously, if we're not offering it anymore and we're talking about five years past this decision in 2010, that perhaps we should take it out of the ordinance entirely to not kind of muddy the waters. Although I respect Alderman Simonian's opinion that perhaps it should be a tool that we still can offer if we got new, you know, business. But I think that's the, so Burgess Norton does know, and actually I'm kind of surprised they're not here tonight. I was expecting them, so. Bob, can you talk about the metering and how accurate that is? I thought when we were emailing, I thought we talked about, is that, is there really an accurate way of determining how much of this water doesn't end up in the sewer system?
I would say for cooling towers and for that evaporative use of water is fairly accurate. I can't say 100%, but it's done by a regular water meter because you have makeup water that goes into a tank and then whatever is filled in is what's being used into the tank and then the rest is evaporated. My concern would be for a sanitary flow meter that could be used for a company that uses water into their product. That's, sanitary flow meters have a tendency to not be as accurate, is my understanding, because it's not taking a full pipe and it's not pressurized on both sides. So if something gets caught on the sensor or something else like that because, you know, the water stream is not purified by any means, then it could be less accurate. So we may have to, you know, work on production numbers. It would be more complex with a sewer flow meter.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
So the thing that I'm trying to get my head around is, so currently this is suspended, correct? So anybody who comes to us, we say, no, we don't offer credits. Pretty simple answer.
Yeah, for industrial users. The code only allows a very specified number, a specific range of industrial users that are eligible for this credit.
Okay, and the $130,000 that we stand to lose each of those five firms that you mentioned would fall into the eligibility categories?
Yes. If they came to us and requested based on the current code language, yes, they could.
So what is the criteria we would use to say yea or nay?
Are you asking me?
I like, I like the idea of having tools of last resort and things, but I get uncomfortable with the idea that we might apply that tool inconsistently or something along those lines. And let's say that we apply consistently, which is we would, we would give the credit to everybody who asks, then we're saying we're going to kiss $130,000 a year goodbye after just last week and the week before talking about the instability of the water fund.
Well, I get, is it okay to answer?
It's a call. You know, suspend.
Thank you. The liberal guidelines.
Best to meet, Chairman.
I guess, I haven't figured out what that formula would be. I didn't come prepared to, I just thought that it's a tool that we, we don't know what's going to happen. We don't know who's going to come knocking on our door. We don't know if somebody wants to build a, you know, 500,000 square foot plant and part of the concessions they're asking for is a contribution and they're looking at two or three different sites. It just gives us an opportunity. How do we figure out the formula? I mean, I think we can probably figure out a formula because it sounds like there's only a handful of them that qualify to begin with. We can figure out a formula, but I, I think that if, in my mind, it's not a big one.
Stepping over a dime.
Yeah. It's, I mean, it's a common sense formula that says, somebody comes knocking on our door and says, we're going to contribute to the city with X amount of additional jobs, X amount of additional taxes, that it's a common sense that is this in the best interest of the citizens of Geneva? They said, yeah, but for me, it's a simple formula. Is it actually an A plus B equals C? Probably not, but you know, I guess, and the other part of the argument is, last week was we were laser focused on a smaller fixed dollar amount and majority on usage. But now we turn around and we say, here's an industrial or business partner and they're not using it, but let's charge them for usage. So I guess, I don't have a problem with figuring out which, how we're going to do it, but I just think that, to me personally, since it has to come to the city council anyhow the way it's written now, what harm is there in letting it come to the city council?
Right. So I get, so basically what you're saying is we would use it the way we use economic incentives currently?
Exactly.
Tax incentives or whatever, whatever tools we have, we would use it the same way.
Right. It's in the best interest of us, of the city.
Right. So to my knowledge, we use those tools when we're trying to attract a business, but here we're talking about five or six that are currently here. So the same rules apply. I mean, we know from what Tara said, Burgess Norton's going to come knocking and say, we want these credits. I guess Dean indicated Johnson Controls and a few others. We know they're out there. We can see it coming. So we're saying we're prepared to lose the $130,000 annually as a means of keeping these firms who have done without the credit for five years.
It very well may be the case, but you're looking at, you're looking at today. Let's fast forward this tape five years and now their leases come up and they're contemplating moving.
Yeah.
And now we lose because we did not contribute. Why give them a reason to leave or why give them a reason not to come? Is it, is it an investment worthwhile? I don't know the answer. I don't necessarily know the answer. All I'm saying is that I'd like to have that, you know, quiver in my-
Arrow in the-
Or arrow in a quiver, or bullet in the gun, or, you know, wheel on a car, or whatever you want to call it. But yeah, I mean, I'm just looking at it that way.
So that's good. So if we look at it like another economic incentive, is that, is that what this, this for you guys now? Is that what this would be? There's no, there's no legal trouble heading for us if we apply it to one but not another?
I imagine once you open that Pandora's lid, they'll be marching through here in a steady, steady procession and the city council will then have to vote.
Right, but evidently we'll be saying yes to some and no to others, so.
Well, and I'm trying, I was trying to search and I'm not fast enough because I can't remember the date, but we talked about economic incentives and what types of incentives we could give, and I think that policy is actually coming back to the council for review. So I believe you can still have that arrow in your quiver under your economic development incentives for retention and for recruitment, separate and apart from this section in the code. There's a lot of things we do for economic incentives that aren't necessarily spelled out in the code that opens it up, which gives you kind of parameters as to when you would apply those.
I, is it okay?
Sure.
I don't disagree. I think that's, I think that's great. The more economic incentives we have, the better poised we are to compete against our neighbors and other communities. But I also think that we should be cognizant of the fact that those who have been with us for many years protect our current, you know, it's the old adage of, you know, you spend all this time trying to get a new customer and you forget about the old customers and you're worried about what's coming through the front door and everybody's heading out the back door. So it's just a, it's just, and I guess that was part of, what does the competitive landscape look like? What are the, are we, are we in the same channel as that? Or are we over here and everybody else is still offering that kind of thing? That's why I was asking the question originally, is that I think we have to be competitive. I'm done. I'm done.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, seeing none, please take the roll.
Tara Burkhart? I'm just looking to make sure I know exactly which way, what we're voting on here.
Do you need clarification?
Yes, let's do clarification.
Okay. I believe the motion as it currently sits will be to codify what we currently have been telling people since 2010 that the credit is no longer available. Is that correct?
Correct.
So a positive vote would be to support that, rather than leave it on the books and still tell people one at a time as to what our position is as they approach us.
Thank you, Chairman. All right. Aye. Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Nay.
Richard Marx?
Nay.
Jim Rodecky?
Aye.
Tom Simonian?
Nay.
Mary Sino?
Nay.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Four to four tie.
Somebody get Bruno quickly.
He asked me to vote for him, by the way.
I think it fails with the tie.
Motion fails with the tie.
Can I still ask a question, a question about this out of curiosity question? From 2010, if this was, if this was actually in place since 2010 until now, if an industrial customer requested this, would it have not had to come to the city council for a vote? I mean, if codifying it five years later, shame on somebody for not codifying this five years ago.
Burgess Norton did approach staff earlier this summer, at which point in time staff told Burgess Norton that they, they had the right under the city code to bring it forward at their discretion, but they would be bringing it forward with a negative recommendation by staff, at which point in time they chose not to pursue it.
So if people bring this forward now, we will take them on a case by case basis and bring them forward for council consideration?
Yes, at their discretion. It's the research and the necessary calculations are all done at the business owner's expense. They're verified by staff or through a consultant, again, at the business owner's expense.
As well as the metering?
Yeah. All the costs would be borne by the, by the business owner, but that before any of the credits were issued, they'd have to be brought back to the city council, at which point in time you would have to give it a formal approval or disapproval.
Anything else? Somebody get Alderman Bruno, please.
You can get him on the ground.
All right, thank you. Is, is there a way before this is coming up for next week's?
No. We failed it.
Oh.
We failed to recommend it to next week's meeting.
Oh, okay.
So I'm going to expect we're going to see Burgess Norton here soon because they've been pressing the issue. Oh, sorry. Pressing.
Oh, I can lead again.
No, we just repealed the historic preservation.
About time somebody did it.
Have a seat. We all clear?
Yep.
Okay, moving on to item E, 3E, recommend draft ordinance for 2015 general corporate and special service area tax levies. Do we have a motion and second?
So moved.
Motion by Marx?
Second.
Second by Kilburg. Discussion. I believe this is something we've already-
Yes, it is.
Has the estimate back in the number of-
Yeah. Alderman Simonian?
Thank you, Chairman. In the, I guess in the, in the letter following, or the memo following on page 19 from after the executive summary, in the first paragraph, the last sentence, it says, "As a result, the city portion of the tax rate is estimated to increase from .533 to .532." Is that an increase?
It should be a decrease.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Good touch.
See that red line stuff works?
We're just checking to see if we-
Still got ready? Still got ready?
Of all 15, 20 pages, you got it.
I get the lollipop of the sticker choice.
We have our finance manager, Rita Cruz, with us. Would you like to, anything you'd like to share?
This is the exact same item that came up in, on November 2nd at the city council meeting and we're just bringing it back. We have 20 days after it came on the, on the, um, 2nd, so this is 20 days later. If approved tonight, it will go to the city council on the 7th.
I, I have a question for you, Rita.
Hmm.
As you go down in this, in the pages, when it says, uh, the budget amount, 2014, 2015 budget amount, and then the next column says income from other sources?
Yes.
What is, what is that income from other sources? Let, I mean, take, you can take an example. I mean, uh, let's take, uh, you know, economic development. It says $165,000, some change for the budget amount, $132,000 from, uh, other sources and then, uh, $33,000 to be raised by taxation.
That numbers are presented by all the revenues on top, other than the property taxes.
Okay.
So specific line items, when you turn to the following pages, show exactly where they're coming from and the remainder comes from other sources, which would be anything from telecommunications tax, fire tax, sales tax, income tax.
Okay, so the income is from other taxing sources?
Yes, outside of property tax, everything else but-
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? From the audience. Do we have a motion and a second? Please take the roll.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burkhart?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Jim Rodecky?
Aye.
Tom Simonian?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Uh, that brings us down to new business. Is there any new business from the dais?
I'd like to-
Alderman Simonian?
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to congratulate whoever that plow driver was that whacked the mayor's mailbox. And I think he is, deserves a raise or a promotion.
Okay, now, in all fairness to the street department, I'm guessing it's the weight of the snow that takes down a very shabby mailbox is what, is what the mayor probably had up in front of his house to start with?
Well, most likely it was weighted a snow girl.
Okay, and not a direct hit from the plow driver?
Yeah, no, I, I, I didn't mean it was a direct hit. Um, I would tend to believe a shabby mailbox is more appropriate.
Kind of made my holiday season tick off, I don't know. Uh, anybody from the audience with new business?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Oh, Alderman Singer, please.
Thank you. I would like to wish all our members of the staff and the council and our citizens of Geneva a very happy holiday. Hopefully everyone will have all that they hoped for and desired and have a great Thanksgiving. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Alderman Singer. And if your turkey's still in the freezer, you might want to get it out tonight and put it in the refrigerator.
It's, it's out.
Anything else? Okay, do we have a motion and a term?
So moved.
Simonian, Marx, all in favors?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a good evening.